Welcome everyone to the Judiciary Committee hearing this Tuesday morning nine forty-five. We do have a two-minute time limit on testimony, both on Zoom and in person and but if you can hang around for questions afterwards, that'd be great because we often do have them. If we have a catastrophic technical crash on the Zoom side, we'll try again on Friday at ten AM. Friday at ten AM, hopefully that won't happen. Okay, first up on the agenda today is HB one oh three, this changes the age for which individuals are eligible for life without parole sentences from eighteen years of age or older to twenty-one years. First up on one oh three, HB one oh three Starship Forrest for Office Public Defender. In support. Next is Daniel Hugo for Department of Prosecuting Attorney sitting in County. In opposition, next is Frank Schultz in opposition, Gregory Muscascian. Musacian, sorry, on Zoom maybe?
He's not present on Zoom chair.
Also in opposition, and we have Michael Holder in support. That's everyone who signed up on HB one oh three, does anyone else wish to testify in HB one oh three? Seeing none members, no one to ask questions of, so we'll go ahead and move on to HB one eleven. This authorizes civil claims to be made against a person, business owner or person or business operator that profits from sexual exploitation or sex trafficking. First up on HB one eleven is Kelton Walgen for the Office Prosecuting Attorney on Maui, and I'm sorry, in Hawaii County. In support, Amy Zhao in support for Emu Alliance, Stephen Munkelt for the League of Women Voters. In support, Nadine Ortega for Tugnala Mutual Aid in support. ISIS Usborn for Sex Worker Outreach Project Hawaii in opposition. Frank Schultz in support, Dara Carlin in support, and Alice Abolanida in support. That's everyone who signed up on HB one eleven, would anyone else like to testify in HB one eleven? If not, we'll move on to the next bill. HB one thirty-two, this amends the Department of Attorney General's pilot project for state-initiated expungement process of arrest records concerning promoting a detrimental drug in the third degree to include the possession of any Schedule five substance in any amount. First up on one thirty-two is Sunny Gannon for the Office of Public Defender, good morning.
Good morning. Sunny Gannon, Deputy Public Defender, good morning Chair, Vice Chair. The Office of Public Defender had an opportunity to work with several other members of government, including the judiciary and the Office of the Attorney General, to do several expungement clinics over the last summer, they were pretty successful. We put the numbers that we had in our testimony, we processed one hundred and nineteen cases, worked with eighty individuals regarding prospective expungement. Submitted seventy-two. Just, that's just the Y and I one, the Y Manala one, we processed forty-two individuals and submitted forty-one of those individuals for expungement. Not only did we do that, we had the opportunity to work with people and talk to them about what is the content of their criminal record, how to apply for jobs. This is important work, a lot of people have the opportunity to get their records cleared and move on with their lives. We think that there's unnecessary administrative burdens and this is an opportunity to clear them up, thank you.
Thank you very much, next up is Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. In support, next is Karyan Schroeder for ACLU of Hawaii. On Zoom maybe?
Not present on Zoom chair.
Also in support, Cat Brady testifying for Community Alliance on Prisons, good morning.
Good morning Committee, Cat Brady testifying in strong support of this measure for community alliance on prisons. So now Hawaii is part of a prime of pilot project that's going to take six months with six other states. And this is really important because having a criminal record just totally derails your life. So we really think this is an important, important bill, thank you for your.
Thank you, next up was Colleen Rose Gannick in support, Carla Allison in support Frank Schultz in opposition, sorry. That's everybody who signed up on HB one thirty-two, does anyone else wish to testify in HB one thirty-two? Seeing none members questions? For Mr. Gannon maybe?
Yeah.
And you're reading the bill, what additional substances would be eligible for expungements under the bill and schedule, all Schedule five, but what does that include?
I'd have to re-refer.
Okay, no problem.
I can check in later than that.
No, it's all right, I had one other question, approximately, how many arrests for the additional substances are potentially eligible in Hawaii County, do you know? No, anybody have that information? How many people that would affect in Hawaii County? Yeah, sure, come on.
Phil Higdon from the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. Not, not very many, handful maybe, I don't have the numbers off, but we ran them, so less than probably twenty, I would say, but I can get you the exact number.
That's fine, ballpark's fine.
And we're talking about coding as well, I know that that is one of the Schedule four.
Schedule four, this is Schedule five.
Schedule five, I'm sorry.
Okay, so coding's the only one that you're specifically aware of, it's Schedule five?
That I'm specifically aware of.
Okay, thank you.
I'll find out for you as well.
Appreciate. Other questions members? If not, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, this is HB one forty-five, this authorizes the Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center to transmit all expungement orders to the judiciary to effect the purposes of Act one fifty-nine from two thousand and twenty-three. First up on one forty-five is Administrator Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center, I believe.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members, my name is Phil Higdon, Administrator Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center. The Department supports this bill, we have provided written testimony, we believe that the current draft of this bill has, and House Draft One has addressed any concerns, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, next up is Michelle Acosta for the Judiciary.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee, Michelle Acosta here on behalf of the Judiciary. We're strong support of HB one four five, HB one. And as Deputy Public Defender Gannon expressed, we are committed to the expungement and have participated with Attorney General's Office as well as the volunteer attorneys from the Public Defender's Office. And at the expungement clinics that occurred in recent months. We are prepared to receive the expungement orders from HCHADC, but we do request that these, the amendments in HD one be passed in order for us to move forward with the Act one five-nine. If you have any questions.
Great, thank you, next up is Sunny Gannon for Office Public Defender.
Morning again, morning again, Deputy Public Defender. Of course, we are in support of this bill, we support the amendment as suggested by the judiciary. We'd also like to show our appreciation for the judges that actually showed up to these clinics. Ordinarily, you don't see judges out in the wild, but they came on a Saturday and spent their time to process these documents because that's how much they care about it. This is an administrative burden, it's unnecessary, it's time we cleared it up, thank you.
Thank you, next up is Karyan Schroeder for the ACLU of Hawaii, maybe on Zoom?
Sorry, not present on Zoom chair.
In support, next Cat Brady for Community Alliance on Prisons, morning again.
Good morning again Committee, thank you so much for hearing this bill, we're in strong support.
Okay, thank you, next is Carla Allison in support and Frank Schultz in opposition, that's everybody who signed up for HB one forty-five, does anyone else wish to testify in HB one forty-five? Members questions? I do have a question for Judiciary Judge Acosta. Oh, sorry, I gave you, I gave you a pay raise, sorry about that. I should know, I've confirmed like the last, helped confirm like the last forty judges, but I don't remember everybody. Anyway, my question, can you describe in detail, although it's more detailed, the steps the judiciary is taking to enable implementation of this bill to address the multiple case and multiple defendant situations? I know we had a discussion about this when we heard the Senate bill, but just want to see where you're, where we're at.
We have, we acknowledge the, the discussion we had when this bill came through on the Senate version. We are looking on a technological solution, how that feasibility is to block a search for a defendant in a multi-defendant case. That research is ongoing, we've had discussions and our IT Department Director is here as well, if you wanted some technical, more technical details about that, but we have been researching that. So it would address the multi-defendant situation, however, we are not able to address the multi-count, so for example, if a defendant has a multi-count, five charges and two charges are dismissed and eligible for expungement. Those cases would not be addressed by this solution of blocking a party from, from being searched if they were a multi-defendant.
Okay, so, so with the current technology, you think you'll be able to block the one defendant off a multi-defendant case number?
So we would not, it's, it's, the technology is not there yet, we've been researching it. So we believe that conceptually that can be done. I don't have an estimate right now how long that would take or how.
But then where you have a single defendant with multiple charges, you're saying that's a more difficult problem?
It would be a more difficult problem because that would require a major overhaul of our system. We had to do, be careful as to how that may impact the functionality of our system and it's, it's the case management system, so we.
So is that the goal, is to make it so you can expunge them all, or you just?
I think the desire is to be able to, to seal those cases where there are expungement orders of arrests. Again, I don't have, while we are doing the research, I don't have unfortunately the estimated time or the cost to meet that ultimate goal.
Okay, well, that, I would encourage you to figure out, I mean, technically, technically, I'm sure it's possible. But the question is, how much, how much, how much does it cost and how long will it take and that sort of thing, so I guess I would encourage you to go ahead and look at those and you know, if it ends up being a big dollar amount, then we'll have to decide what we're going to do, but please do move ahead and figure out what it would take. Okay, thank you, members other questions? If not, thank you, we're going to move on to the next bill, which is HB three sixty-nine. It's relating to campaign contributions and amend section eleven, three sixty-four to provide that an excess contribution of more than a hundred dollars in cash in the aggregate from a single person during election period to a candidate, candidate committee or non-candidate committee shall eschete the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund if not returned in thirty days, which by the way is the same rule for all other contributions. First up is Kristen Izumi-Natale, Executive Director of Campaign Spending Commission, good morning.
Morning, morning, morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members. This is Kristen Izumi-Natale, Executive Director of Campaign Spending Commission. This is a Campaign Spending Commission Bill, we provided written testimony and support. As Chair Rhodes has informed you, it is really a housekeeping measure as a result of last session where there was a prohibition of how much cash can be accepted within a election period. So this bill is merely requiring that any excess contribution that is not returned to the contributor within thirty days that it eschets to the Hawaii Election Campaign Fund because it just doesn't make sense that a committee can keep that excess amount. I'm available if you have any questions, but thank you.
Thank you very much, next up is Beppe Shapiro for League of Women Voters. In support. Master Philby Picchu Billionaire for Ohana Unity Party and Kingdom of Hawaiian Islands on Zoom maybe?
Not present on Zoom chair.
In support, Frank Schultz in opposition, and that's everybody who signed up on HB three sixty-nine, would anyone else like to testify in HB three sixty-nine? Seeing none members questions? I don't have any either, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is HB four, four oh eight, extends the deadline to register to vote by mail from thirty to ten days prior to a primary or general election, repeals absolute language regarding permanent absentee ballots. First up on four oh eight is Scott Nago for Office of Elections, good morning.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify and support, this is a housekeeping measure that so we already have a ten-day deadline, but there's parts of the statute where it still refers to a thirty-day deadline, this just makes it inconsistent. I'll be available to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bronson Silver for the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Amy Monk in support, Marsha Kimball in support, Jody Robinson in support, Michael Holder in support, Frank Schultz in support. That's everybody who signed up on HB four oh eight, would anyone else like to testify in HB four oh eight? Seeing none members questions? Let's go ahead and move on to the next bill. HB one thousand and one, this makes general fund appropriations for Fiscals twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven to fund the establish a settlement of claims related to the Maui wildfires. Establishes the Maui wildfire settlement trust fund to be administered by the Attorney General. First up on one thousand and one is Randall Nishiyama, Deputy Attorney General, and, oh, you're here, good morning.
Morning, Ian Robertson, Deputy Attorney General here for, for Randall Nishiyama. To summarize, we've submitted testimony in support of this bill and suggesting appropriation amounts for the, for the blanks, thank you.
Thank you, next we have Alice Lee, Chair of the Maui County Council. In support, Tommy Amachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii on Zoom, good morning.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tommy Amachika from Tax Foundation, we will stand on our written testimony and be available for questions.
Thank you very much, next is Shelby Picchu Billionaire for Ohana Unity Party and Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands, also possibly on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom chair.
He is in support as well, that's everybody who signed up on HB one zero zero one, does anyone else wish to testify in HB one zero zero one? Seeing none members questions? Okay, let's move on to HB eleven seventy-five, removes language specifying that an appeal from the Tax Appeal Court be filed with the Tax Appeal Court. Allows an appeal from the Tax Appeal Court be filed within thirty days of entry of a final judgment. First up on eleven seventy-five is Tommy Amachika again for Tax Foundation of Hawaii, morning again.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tommy Amachika for Tax Foundation of Hawaii. This bill seeks to resolve a procedural trap that was occasioned as a result of differences in the statute allowing appeals from a tax appeal court as opposed to any other circuit court. And because of this difference, there was actually a, a case in which a litigant appealed from the wrong order, and this is a, you know, former Supreme Court Justice, so you know, somebody not inexperienced at this. So this bill would allow an appeal from either the final judgment or from the the order you recognized in Alfred versus City and founding Honolulu, and it would solve the procedural trap. I'd be happy to answer any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, next up we have Frank Schultz in support. And that's it, does anyone else wish to testify in HB eleven seventy-five? Seeing none members questions? If not, let's go ahead and move on to the next bill, HB three eighty-six, this conforms Fenton Alt to the possession offenses offense thresholds for methamphetamine, heroin, morphine and cocaine. First up on three eighty-six is Mike Lambert for Department of Law Enforcement in support. Keljan Walchen, Prosecuting Attorney for Hawaii County in support, Daniel Hugo for Prosecuting Attorney in City of County. Also in support, Jerome Carl for Home Police Department on Zoom maybe?
Not present on Zoom chair.
In support, Shelby Picchu Billionaire for Ohana Unity Party and Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands, possibly on Zoom.
Also not present on Zoom.
He's in support, Frank Schultz also in support, that's everybody who signed up on HB three eighty-six, does anyone else wish to testify in HB three eighty-six? Seeing none members questions? Okay, moving on, HB one thirty-four, this requires the Chief Election Officer to provide a system for the electronic filing of nomination papers. First up on one thirty-four is Scott Nago for Office. Okay, thank you, Bronson Silva in support, Brett Colbus on Zoom, yes, go ahead, morning.
Good morning Chair Rhodes, Committee Members, my name is Brett Colbus, I'm a twenty-six-year-old Navy veteran, I live in Eva Beach. I oppose HB one thirty-four. While I understand the intent to modernize the nomination process, I have serious concerns about the security and integrity of an electronic filing system as well as the verification of the required signatures of properly registered voters qualified to vote for the, for the candidates. We already have a partial electronic filing system candidates may use to generate the nomination paperwork to print for collecting signatures. While our current system, though not perfect, it does provide a tangible and verifiable record of candidate nominations. Furthermore, the appropriation of funds for this system seems unwise given the current economic climate and other pressing needs of our state. I urge the Committee to vote against HB one thirty-four. Mahalo for your time and consideration.
Thanks very much, next up is Shelby Picchu Billionaire for Ohana Unity Party and Kingdom of the Hawaiian Islands, maybe on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom chair.
In support, Alice Abolanida in support, Frank Schultz in support, and that's everybody who signed up to testify in HB one thirty-four. Anyone else wish to testify in HB one thirty-four? Seeing none members questions? I have a question for Mr. Nago. I think your testimony said that you would like to charge an extra fee for filing in this manner?
So, this would be the, the fee that would be used to, would be assessed for credit card charges. The reason why we're asking that it be in the law is because our law specifically says that the filing fee is two hundred and fifty dollars or twenty-five dollars discounted filing fee. Absent of something that clarifies this, we don't know if we could charge that fee, pass that fee on to the, the candidate.
So why do we want to pass the fee on?
Because then we would have to eat the cost or we would have to come out of the two hundred and fifty, fifty dollars filing fee.
So we don't have this situation in any other, there's nothing else that's filed electronically where we take money that gets a fee charged to it?
There's a fee charge, but the, the fee isn't specifically set out in statute like the candidate filing fee is.
Oh, so you can adjust it?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, because to me, it seems like it would be important if you're going to go this route, that it should just be the same as filing any other way, because otherwise people will probably try to skip the fee and come in anyway, which I think probably costs, I mean, it's not a.
I think it's for convenience purposes, it just depends if the vote, if a candidate wants to come in and not pay the fee or pay the fee, it's the same with real property tax, you can go online and charge your, or your automotive registration, you can charge it, pay the convenience fee, or you can mail in a check.
I was thinking of it the other way around, so when, when candidate Carl Rhodes comes into your office and spends, I don't know, it usually takes a while. Isn't, doesn't that take, doesn't that actually use more of your resources than having to, having it all electronic?
No, it depends on the system we have, because we would still have to verify the signatures, it's just would we have to do it while the candidate's waiting, or would we do it when the, before the candidate, I mean, when the candidate's not there?
Okay, all right, fair enough, other questions members? If not, thank you very much. If anyone has any objections, we'll go ahead and move into decision-making. Hearing none, let's go back to HB one oh three, this changes the age for which individuals are eligible for life without parole sentences from eighteen years or older to twenty-one years or older. The recommendation here is to pass with some amendments. You'll discover at the end that they're quite similar to what we passed out with the, the SB, we'll create a new statute to chapter seven oh six to state that no one under the age of twenty-one can be sentenced to a term of life without parole, and this prohibition will apply to all sentencing laws, not just specific ones mentioned here. We'll delete sections two, three and four of the bill that propose amendments to those specific sentencing statutes. We'll define emerging adult defendant as a person convicted of a crime who is over eighteen but less than twenty-one. And in the committee report, I'd like to state that the bill is not intended to prohibit the sentencing of defendants to life imprisonment with, with, with the, excuse me. Not intended to prohibit the sentencing of defendants to life with the possibility of parole or potentially lengthy minimum term of imprisonment. Imprisonment for defendants between ages of eighteen and twenty-one. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair Gabbard.
On HB one oh three, the recommendations to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Woodside, Senator Chang, Senator Sanbunamatur, Senator Owa. The measure passes.
Thank you, next up is HB one one one, this authorizes civil claims to be made against a person, business owner or business operator that profits from sexual exploitation or civil sex trafficking. We're not quite, we're not quite ready to make a recommendation on this one, there's still some questions I think need to be answered, so we're going to defer this until March eighteen, which is a week from today at ten AM in this room, oh one six. Okay, moving on to HB one thirty-two, this amends the Department of Attorney General's pilot project for a state-initiated expungement process of arrest records concerning promoting a dangerous drug in the third degree to include the possession of any Schedule five substance in any amount. And this does just apply to Hawaii County at the moment, excuse me. This one I suggest that we pass unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On HB one thirty-two, HD one, recommendations to pass unamended if the members present, involved person, any knows or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you, next up is HB one forty-five, authorizes it to Hawaii Criminal Justice Data Center to transmit all expungement orders to the judiciary to effect the purposes of Act one fifty-nine, section law two, two, two thousand and twenty-three. Recommendation here is to pass unamended, amended, but I'd like to put in some committee report language saying that it's our understanding that the judiciary is attempting to solve the problems where the, the scenarios where there are multiple defendants or multiple charges and not all of them are expunged, so highlighting the conversation we had in testimony. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Recommendation on HB one forty-five, HD one is to pass unamended, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you, next up is HB three sixty-nine, this amends section three, eleven dash three sixty-four to provide that an excess contribution of more than a hundred dollars in cash in the aggregate eschets to the state after thirty days. Recommendation here is to pass as is, questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendation on HB three sixty-nine, pass as is, any no votes or reservations?
No.
Only one no vote for Senator Owa, the measure is adopted.
Thank you, next up is HB four oh eight, this extends the deadline to register to vote by mail from thirty to ten days prior to primary or general, which conforms it with that same practice in other parts of the statute, recommendations to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Recommendation on HB four oh eight is to pass unamended, any no votes or reservations?
No.
One no vote for Senator Owa, the measure is adopted.
Thank you, next up is HB one zero zero one, this makes general appropriations for fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven to fund the settlement of claims related to Maui wildfires and establishes the Maui wildfires settlement trust fund. Recommendation is to pass with some amendments, we'll change the preamble to reflect the Supreme Court's decision in the matter of petition for coordination of Maui fire cases. And there are some SMA, some technical amendments as well. Questions or concerns?
Comment. Comment. Comment.
Oh, yes, please, go ahead, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Thanks, Chair. Chair Rhodes, as you know, in the Senate, we've been able to put our party differences aside to work on other people's problems to, to a degree. Ordinarily, I'd vote yes for this bill, but what I found out about House leadership this past week behind closed doors makes me uncomfortable with putting my name on anything that they put out, so this will be a no.
Okay, okay, thank you. Other questions or concerns, if not, Vice Chair.
HB one thousand and one, HD one, recommendations to pass with amendments, any no votes or reservations?
No.
No vote for Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Thank you, next up is HB one one seven five, removes the language specifying that an appeal from the Tax Appeal Court be filed with the Tax Appeal Court. Allows an appeal from the Tax Appeal Court to be filed within thirty days of entry of a final judgment. Recommendations, recommendations to pass as is, questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
On HB eleven seventy-five, recommendations to pass unamended, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you, next up is HB three eighty-six, this conforms Fenton Alt to the possession offenses thresholds for methamphetamine, heroin, morphine and cocaine. Recommendation is to pass as is, questions or concerns? Seeing none, Senator Gabbard.
HB three eighty-six, recommendations to pass as is, any no votes or reservations?
No.
No vote for Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Thanks, next up is HB one thirty-four, this requires the Chief Election Officer to provide a system for the electronic filing of nomination papers. Recommendation here is to pass with amendments to make it clear that we that the, the electronic filing would incur no additional charge. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Recommendations to pass HB one thirty-four, HD one with amendments, any no votes or reservations?
No.
No vote for Senator Owa, the measure is adopted.
Thank you very much, thanks everyone for being here, that concludes our business, we're adjourned. We're adjourned.